I'm looking for our attorney. By not seeing Karen.
I thought she was gonna be here.
I thought she was gonna be here in person. She is never late. Let me double check my phone. Maybe a few minutes late.
Thank you. I also need to turn the camera on too for the.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. Thank you. Turn that camera on. Okay. We can actually call to order and move before Kara gets here. That's fine. So. Good evening. This is the Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, regular meeting of the Flemington Borough Planning Board. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, with an electronic notice in this meeting, as been provided by way of application in the Hundred and Hundred Democrat, hurried newspaper's honor about January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. In addition, notice of the meeting was posted on the door of the borough of Flemington Municipal Building located at thirty-eight Park Avenue. And any handicap and sensible interest is there too. Posted on municipal website, provided to the municipal authority, distributed to all persons. If any requests or comments are saying this meeting is being recorded with the audio and video and maybe re-recorded, this meeting is a usual proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what according to legally considered reaching a decision. And decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Let's get ready to rise as you're able to flag salute. But the agents in the flag of the United States of America, and in the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Karen, here. Uh, Councilwoman Awar is, excuse, um, Mr. Champion?
Here.
Joshna?
Here.
Mr. Levitt?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Ms. Giffen?
Yeah.
Ms. Whitesman?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Mr. Semino?
Here.
Mr. Echo?
Here.
Mr. Mario, means excuse, oh, not here, over. Um, Mr. Show?
Here.
Ms. Kaczynski?
Here.
Engineer Clarico is excused. Um, Mr. Hill? As our, obviously, our Ian Hill.
I am standing in for Bob tonight. Good evening.
It's McVanas, here. Mr. Troutman?
Here.
Okay, uh, just so you know, we're gonna announce this officially in about an hour, but Worthville is carried to December twelfth.
Um, I just made a small application that it might be carried until the following month, June the fourth. I know you have your reorganization on the ninth, just so that we don't consistently come back there.
It's up to the applicant to, to, to talk to us in terms of what they want to do. They are, they want to, they request to carry twelve. All right, that's what's gonna get announced. If it gets carried beyond that, it gets carried beyond that. I would hope that y'all figure everything out.
But. Yeah. I'm sorry too.
We do have another meeting on December nineteenth. Um, it was.
Twelfth and nineteenth.
Twelfth and nineteenth, December.
All right.
Through the third to the twelfth.
Karen will be, I'll announce it, but I'll give it in the morning.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Bye, thank you.
All right, item one, um, as always during our meetings is its period, time for a period of public comments. Any members of the public, please raise your real or virtual hand and wish us. Seeing none, uh, item two, mayor comments?
I'm on the way I do tonight. Um, I am going to ask Beth to walk the planning board through a very, I'm gonna say aggressive calendar, uh, to try to get those new villages, moveables, perhaps as soon as the end of January. Um, so we have been working very hard dealing with them. They've had a lot of, um, issues in their site because of the sore motor rules. Um, there's been a significant change. Um, a lot of it driven by that. And, um, so I think we're almost over that finish line. And, uh, so I'm gonna ask Beth to walk you all through.
Yeah, if we could do that during chair items, I think that would be, just because we want to play all the way on the calendar.
But don't I have to leave something? Or is everything off?
No, Worthville's off because Chick-fil-A is a, so, yeah.
How many? No dividends.
There's no dividends on Chick-fil-A, so, yeah. Uh, anything else? No, okay, thank you. Um, Councilwoman Bior is not here yet, or not here at all. I'm not sure.
She was, she was going to leave tonight.
So she's leaving tonight. Okay, so, uh, no council comments. Uh, HPC, we have a report from HPC which we're gonna get to leave just a moment, but is there anything else, Dennis?
We have our meeting tomorrow. Um, the only thing I just mentioned is, um, we haven't gotten anything on Central Station LLC, the new design, so we're concerned about being able to provide feedback in advance of the November twenty-eighth meeting if it's still on the agenda. So that's, that's our concern.
It'll be on the agenda because it was carried, but we, I share your concern about not seeing revised plans because our professionals need time to review them as well. So, uh, um, we'll get to that under chair items, but, but we may need to reach out to the applicant's attorney on that one.
That's it.
Okay, thanks. Um, item five is approval of minutes from the October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-third regular meeting.
Don't move, come.
Any other discussion or clarification on the minutes?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mayor Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Champion?
Yes.
Joshna?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Cook? I'm sorry, I already didn't say yes. Ms. Giffen? Ms. Whitesman?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Semino?
You.
Thank you.
Okay, um, item six on the agenda is, is Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash sixteen, Flemington Realty Partners to LLC. Resolution memorializing, uh, action taken by the board, um, in regards to application twenty-three dash oh four, block thirty-nine, lot six, seventy-eight Church Street. Um, that was circulated earlier today.
Um, that was actually last.
No, that was last. Okay.
Didn't make its way, the final version, I feel a comment submitted, it's way added, so.
So it's been circulated. All right. Um, eligible to vote are listed on the agenda. Caro Engelhardt, Champion, Ashken Levitt, Whitesman, Phil and Show. Can I get a motion? One of those.
A second.
Any, uh, further discussion on the resolution?
Well, I have a question for Beth, I guess, and Kara. To the, the resolution, you know, we talked, um, a bit, um, several months ago about, um, the shade trees, the environmental commission, um, request or recommendation that perhaps some kind of space would be removed, original shade trees. And, um, the resolution does say that there's supposed to work with our professionals to find room for at least four more shade trees. Um, it doesn't say anything about, you know, the impervious coverage and removing it. Is that implicit? I mean, without saying it, you know, that, that should be a consideration that we, there's something like, including the possibility of them creating more pervious coverage. Uh, I'm just concerned that they're, you know, without saying that in writing, um, which was the discussion, as a recommendation of the plant, of the environmental commission, that it's not gonna happen. Well, I ended up with four trees crammed in somewhere and they're gonna end up, you know, they wouldn't have enough, uh, you know, enough, enough ground to grow properly. The condition. So it says, the applicant shall work with the board professionals to amend the lighting and landscaping plans to the satisfaction thereof, including but not limited to, um, the amendments that are above, which we had, and the inclusion of at least four additional shade trees.
Right.
Um, I'd have to go back to look to see the language regarding the impervious coverage. I would think that you would, again, to your point, in order to make sure that the trees properly grew, you would have to remove impervious coverage. But my opinion, working with the board's professionals, the board's professionals are going to ensure that nothing is cramped. I mean, that would be my, my take on it. Yeah, I, I think that the reality is, it'll, we'll have to find suitable locations for the trees, suitable meaning, uh, a place where the tree can grow healthy, you know, so it's not gonna be expanded. But I do think, thank you, I do think that this condition doesn't require that impervious cover being removed in order to accommodate the tree. Well, it does, I mean, that's my point. Yeah. It doesn't, the environmental commission, you know, suggested it. Um, Councilwoman Engelhardt and, uh, Vice Chair Levitt, we all, you know, we all talked about that. And that Councilwoman Engelhardt said, when we said how many trees, she said seven. Um, you know, that she thought seven was the right number, looking at plan or whatever. So, you know, I think, you know, they, they have tons more parking at that site than anybody thought they needed, um, including our traffic consultant. So I just, I'm just concerned we're gonna end up with four, and nobody's gonna consider taking away any more impervious cover. And, uh, and that's just gonna be that. And, you know, because that's what the resolution says, and I just keep seeing that time and time again, where, you know, um, people think things get in, they don't get in, and then, um, you know, I mean, I remember the hotel here, where the redevelopment promised he was gonna put cameras outside so people could watch the construction. Said it, never got to the resolution, said he was gonna create a citizen, you know, group that would meet with him, never got him to the resolution, doesn't get the resolution, it doesn't happen. So I'm just bringing it up because it's not in the resolution, that that should be a consideration as well of removing pervious coverage.
Uh, Trent has, has had his hand up for a second, so I'm not gonna jump in.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, um, yeah, I, I, I remember it explicitly being, uh, through the removal of, you know, parking spaces that we would get those extra shade trees and the reduction of impervious coverage. Um, like, I, I'm pretty sure they, you know, we specifically asked for that, and they testified to that, if I remember correctly. That was all.
But we, um, so what I was just, was bringing Karen, I'll just say, is that my recollection is that the implication was that impervious cover would be removed through, uh, the provision of the additional trees, but not that it was so specific as, uh, parking spaces or other pervias shall be removed as the only way to provide the trees. Right, they agreed that they would consider doing it, that's what our professionals wanted. They said, they didn't agree to do it. They said they would absolutely consider doing it. And so the agreement was, you know, Councilwoman Engelhardt picked out the number seven. We all agreed it would be a minimum of four. Our professionals would talk with them about the removal of some of those parking spaces and adding more trees. But again, doesn't say it, that should be a consideration. They're not gonna consider it. Well, here, but, and, and first of all, let me start by saying, since we're making a change to what was presented to the applicant, we're not going to adopt this tonight if we're making, or suggesting there'll be any changes. I don't wanna be in that situation. The applicant's attorney should look at this again and make sure that, you know, they know what's being adopted tonight, that's considered to it. That being said, um, I do wanna go back, I do wanna listen to the tapes and, and see exactly what was said. My recollection was exactly what yours was, but if the agreement was to consider, and that's the language, then that's what the board and the applicant agreed to. So whether they consider removing pavement, whether they consider including more trees, whether they consider this, it was a condition that they consider. No, but it was, you listen to the tape, Kara, because. I will, and I absolutely will. Because as that date went forward, basically, your side of the room said, we'll deal with that as professionals when we get to that point. So, you know, it, to me, that was, our professionals are now gonna advocate to them, this is what they're gonna do, is add more trees and tear up some academies not needed in this site plan. So, but that's not what the resolution says. So I would prefer you guys listen to it and, you know, push the point, because I think there was a consensus that that's, you know.
Okay, so, so what I would suggest then is that Kara, please listen to the tape, see what we can get language of stronger on this point, because it was a discussion, uh, that was for. And if we could table this to the next meeting, um, and, because, because, because I wanna, we, we want, we wanna make sure that the resolution reflects what's forward. We gotta have, have discussion, agree to it.
A hundred percent.
I, I do have a, a question though. What is the language, though, to the satisfaction of the board professional? How, how, how far can that be taken if you're not satisfied?
If they can't produce a plan that adds those four trees or any of the other conditions that might have that same language that satisfies me or Bob or Jay to the extent, uh, it's applicable, it, if one of us is gonna put our foot down and say, this did not satisfy the condition, then it's, uh, incumbent upon the applicant to come back to the board.
Because isn't, but isn't that the implication? I wasn't here, so it's just more of a procedural question. If, if an applicant says that, yes, I'll consider that, yes, I'll consider this, yeah, this may be, um, and, and then it says, okay, you're gonna work with our professional to the satisfaction of our board professional. Isn't that the language that we want?
Yeah.
And then you know the implication, whether or not it was said that way, not said that way, isn't that the strongest language we can put in? Because you have the every right to say, I'm not satisfied.
I do, but if we play this out, let's say they come in with a plan and they, and they create, uh, let's say the tapes are not helpful or the language is, remains the way it is. They come in with a plan and shows they're creating, uh, places for four new trees that don't require any pavement elimination, but are there good tree locations from a planting perspective. From their perspective, yes, they haven't satisfied me, but they're gonna be able to argue that they have fulfilled the plain language of the condition. And I think it puts the board, and somebody can disagree, but I think it puts us at a disadvantage when the applicant can say, I've done exactly what the condition is. I recognize the satisfaction of your board planner, but your board planner's asking for something that is not memorialized in the resolution. And so, and it's also helpful because, um, let's say these folks come in for resolution compliance in several months from now. Uh, and maybe I'm not having a good day and I don't remember that they're supposed to remove any of the pavement. Without that guidance, it's, it also leaves an opportunity for something to be missed.
So we want as much specificity in the resolution as possible, but there are certain technicals, because obviously we need to be to professionals on, and it tends to be more on the engineering questions, things like that, but, but.
And like, uh, and some design issues like lighting and landscaping is very prone to defer, but what's nice is when there's, uh, guidance, or maybe in this case, depending on what the tapes say, but a priority, like, uh, a priority shall be to place the trees where impervious cover can be removed. Some guidance to in, to the professional to how to review in determining the condition.
But at the end of the day, if the words from a legal perspective are words like consider, priority, there is no, it, it does not sound to me like there was a definitive, you will remove, which is a legal term versus consider. Because consider says the same thing. It's, I mean, I agree that to make the resolution as specific as possible, but to add the word consider to the resolution makes it no stronger than what it is, but I.
Okay, so, no, no, it's okay. So, so we're going, if, if, let's see who moved that. May I move that?
I did.
Okay, so she's withdrawing her motion to move. Um, and, uh, so Robert's rules wide. We're just gonna table this. Is there any objection to table this for the next meeting? Okay, so we're gonna table this for the next meeting. All right, um, Resolution twenty-three dash seven, memorializing action, uh, connected application twenty-three dash oh two, block thirty-five, block sixty thirteen, Brown Street. Did we get that resolution?
No.
No, so we're gonna, that's gonna be next meeting. Um, resolution twenty-three eighteen, memorializing action taken with regards to application twenty-three dash oh three, block seven, lot five, fifty-three East Main Street. That was the amended resolution.
We did get that today. It was circulated to the applicant as well.
Applicants approved it as well. Applicants approved it. So the five eligible, myself, Mr. Cook, Mr. Levitt, Ms. Whitesman, Mr. Semino, gonna get a motion on that one. One of those five.
So moves the second code. Is there any discussion on this one?
Doc, Nick, Hook, Levitt, Whitesman, Semino.
Uh, Mr. Semino?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Doc?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Whitesman?
And Ms. Whitesman?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, item nine on the agenda this evening is a discussion. Um, we are going, we have, uh, from, uh, our HPC. So what I'm gonna do right there is that app, that computer is gonna, to be able to pop up there, it says, so you wanna click yes to rejoin as a panelist. Once Zoom is happy, click on the, turn on the camera on the laptop. So don't, don't, um, don't worry about the sound, the sound will come on my phone that's, uh, there. All right, so, but for the record, I just wanna make sure that, I'm gonna have Susan joined before the discussion around the resolution.
Correct. That was, um, I had her at seven ten and that was during, well, it was, um.
While we were discussing twenty-three sixteen.
Right.
So, but that's, but she's here now. I just wanna make sure that that's, uh, that's clear for everyone. So, um, our, um.
I just wanted to say, I, I won't be here for long, but I, I wanted to make sure I checked in with everybody.
Did, did you have any report that you needed to share?
No, I believe that Marcher was gonna give an update on the anticipated schedule for the, so he took care of that. I know I was listening in. I just wasn't a panelist yet.
Right, so, um.
Thank you.
I was looking at it.
I don't know.
There's no, did you say it was a PDF?
I created a PDF and I can make sure.
Do you have your own laptop?
I do, but if you want to stick on.
Yeah, I can, uh, let me.
Is that faster?
Well, I don't know if it's faster, but I can pull the presentation that was sent today, convert it to a PDF, put it on a thumb drive and hand it to these.
You want me to share?
You wanna do that? All right.
It's up to you. I can share from PowerPoint.
My brother.
We took seven. Oh, yeah. He sent it to me and then I.
No, we don't have. The presentation. Why'd you say?
I couldn't open it.
Do you need to transition?
Yeah, it's all fancy. The music. Yeah, I know. It's like two.
I'm gonna be honest with you. Like, I teach these, I do presentations. Everyone who does one of those fancy transitions with fades and the bops and the, with the, and the spins and the music, it's points off. I don't like it. It's fun. Don't like that.
Do you want me to share?
Yeah. Back. And does it have a U C on it?
Well.
Why is this, this okay?
Oh.
Where is this? Who's sharing this now?
Sorry. Think I shared the wrong thing, huh?
No, no. You know what? Dennis, do that, give a present, and you are now going to be the pilot.
Now you.
And when they say next slide, you have to click on next slide.
Okay. Can you see?
Yes, but you have to click present, or else we're gonna see all the notes.
Oh, okay. Where does it say present? I'm sorry.
Click on slideshow.
Lower right, a little button there. Stand there, that's it, yeah.
Okay, now we're seeing speakers notes, can just stop the way.
Hold on.
All right, go under up top where it says display settings. It is a down arrow. Yeah, trick click that.
Display.
Where I don't even see display settings, sorry.
So separate from the line.
Above the word Flemington all the way up top.
I don't see.
Oh, he's on two screens.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, let me move it.
With display setting.
Hold on, let me just move it up.
Okay, right here, just, you know, here, right here, click on the slideshow menu.
Fun.
I have my laptop.
And just know this is being recorded for posterity.
Sounds great, okay.
I presumed as well. I didn't. And this was your own. Well, every hero story has a challenge in the resolution.
That's true.
Honestly, just leave it like that. It'll be fine. Just go page by page.
Yeah, yeah. Just like that. So when, when I.
Yeah, this is.
Should we get started then?
Let's get started, ladies.
Thank you very much. So thank you, I think you're invited to see tonight to explain the, um, proposed map update. So next slide, Dennis, please.
The camera's in front of you.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So this first slide is basically a quick recap from the history. Uh, again, I'm, I'm sure some of you on, on the planning board are aware of the history, but maybe some of you aren't. So, as a reminder, back in twenty eighteen, we were authorized to update the historic map. Um, twenty nineteen, um, with, with John, we did an extensive, um, public outreach. And we, um, if I probably came in, we took a lot of feedback, um, we had some mailings, um, and then in September twenty nineteen, we revised the, or proposed revision to the historic map with boundary changes. So, that's sort of highlighting, it's a bit complicated. So, the, the first proposal in September twenty nineteen was, was to revise the boundary. Nineteen buildings to be upgraded, one downgrade and thirty-six to be added. Um, in, in, in the late twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, the feedback we have was that, um, no boundary change was possible. Um, so then in June twenty twenty, we, um, provided a revised memo with, um, revised map with no boundary changes. So that was what came before, um, planning board. And then in October of twenty twenty, uh, planning board adopted a revised map without boundary changes, um, as a amendment to the master plan. At that meeting, I think, uh, planning board noted its intent to adopt a revised plan with boundary changes, uh, very soon. And then I think this, this year, um, Beth, uh, after discussions internally reached out to us and initiated, um, this revised map with boundary changes. So since May, we've been, um, progressing that. We did a presentation to, to, um, council in July. Council, uh, authorized us to proceed. And since then, John's been, um, revising or revisiting the, what we did in twenty nineteen. Then in October, we sent you a memo, or sent you five documents, which I later, uh, detailed in the act, so, next, next slide. So we're gonna go through time team this quickly, we're gonna go through this really quickly, just to give you a background, but first thing is why, why do you have to do the survey? Um, it's recommended throughout the master plan, typically every ten years. Um, one of our historic ordinance is sixteen thirty-one, uh, requires us to maintain and expand, uh, when necessary. Um, I think some of you know, we're, we're also pursuing certified government, so as part of that, we need to, um, review our map regularly. Um, we need to reflect any changes such as demolitions, modifications, road realignments, uh, directing errors. Um, then we also reassess, as John brought, affect the definitions that might have changed. Um, we, we revisit with the, um, the period of significance, um, we reassess that, we can consistent. Uh, helps maintain historic inventory, helps identify new assets. Um, benefits the residents, and if the HPC was established in nineteen eighty to, to, um, build, uh, pride and sense of community with historic properties. Um, it maintains and improves property values. Historic properties are generally to more valuable and on historic properties. And, um, and another one here is it boosts the chance of litigation. So, just some reasons why we think it's pretty compelling to do the map update regularly. Um, next slide, Dennis. So now we hand over to John, who's gonna talk a bit more detail about.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, as most of you know, there are two, uh, basic kinds of historic districts. There are ones that are listed on the state national register of historic places. Um, and there are ones that are locally designated. Flemington happens to be both. Um, when you're listed on the state national register of historic places, there are, uh, that's essentially, essentially there are carrots. So there are tax credits at the federal and state level. There are some reviews if there are projects that are federally, uh, federally funded or state funded. Uh, the controls really happen at the local level if there's a local historic preservation ordinance with, which Flemington certainly has. Next, please. Um, so as I said, the Flemington Historic District is listed on the state national register of historic places. It was listed in nineteen eighty. And that's, uh, pretty early for listing, which means that the nomination was by today's standards, uh, pretty unsophisticated, not particularly detailed, and is missing information that one would include today. So, um, for, for example, uh, the period of significance was relatively, uh, random isn't quite the right word, but it wasn't particularly well-defined. At that time, they would just kind of do it by twenty-five year increments, and, um, the period of significance for Flemington, um, ended in nineteen twenty-five. And, um, the period of significance for Flemington, uh, ended in nineteen twenty-five, um. So, um, given that, and given, um, the, the local designation. Um, used the, um, state national register map, and so those inconsistencies kind of, um, trapped. Between the state national register district and the local district. Next. So when this project was first put together to update the, um, the, the local, the local district. Um, it included a number of, uh, project goals, so including, so updating. A base map for the district to reflect current conditions, there had been road realignments, demolished structures, new buildings, relocations. From the time the map was put together and even since it was updated in two thousand twelve, so that was all done. Um, and was voted on as, as part of that, um, that previous updating of the map. Um, we also provided a complete photographic record of the current conditions of the structures in the district. And some of the structures near the district, and so, so there's a complete record from two thousand and nineteen. Uh, we reviewed and updated the period of significance, which I'll talk about, uh, we made recommendations for changes to the designation, as, uh, Richard mentioned. And we made recommendations for, uh, expanding the boundary, really to reflect. The, uh, more consistent period of significance, and so the significance, so that's what's being considered tonight. Now, since two thousand and twenty, when, uh, we updated the designations. There have actually been, that's, you know, uh, three and a half years ago, so there have actually been a number of changes in the district, demolitions. Various other things, we've also used the map, you know, that, uh, that time period, three and a half years, so we've noticed that there have been a couple of things. Uh, the way things have been designated, uh, for instance, some addresses on the map are kind of confusing. And, um, as we went through this again, we noticed, noted that there were some graphic and text errors that happened. When the information went from the two thousand and twelve map to the two thousand and twenty map. So those are, I would, uh, call those typos, um, so we wanna correct those as well. Uh, next, please. So this was a map from two thousand and twelve, next. Uh, there were changes in road alignments with, which we acknowledged, next, please. There were demolitions and relocations that we noted, next. And, um, and there were a number of, um, designations that were in, uh, incorrect at the time. We went through the entire district, and, uh, and, uh, as Richard had noted, there were a number of changes in designations. Uh, just to, to bring them, to make them consistent, but there were no changes to the boundary when this map was adopted in two thousand and twenty. Next. Now, um, the big, the main reason for adjusting the boundaries is that we, um, we. Did additional research about what the period of, what period of significance makes sense for the Flemington Historic District. And so, um, you know, uh, it was settled in the eighteenth century, the, the bulk of the borough was fully developed. By the early twentieth century, after World War Two and after the Great Depression. Development patterns changed significantly in the United States and changed significantly in Flemington. And so, um, using historic maps that we looked at and historic aerials. It really made sense that the Great Depression, and then using a, a significant event in Flemington, the, the Lindbergh kidnapping trial. That that really marked a good break in, uh, development prior to that and development after it. So that's, uh, so that's what we did, and, um, next slide, please. So this aerial. Uh, proved to be key, this is from nineteen thirty-one, it's really the first aerial that we could look at, and it, and it really showed. Um, how the, the, uh, the borough was developed up to that point, really up to the Great Depression. What was, what had been built and what had not yet been built, so that's where we, this aerial and, and the, the maps, a bunch of maps that we looked at. Prior, prior to this date is, are, uh, really what we use, next, please. So the areas that were developed in nineteen thirty-one, that were not included in the previous map. In the two thousand twelve map, and, and even the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty approved map. Um, these areas were, were developed, had been built, uh, in nineteen thirty-one, in the early nineteen thirties. And so these are what we recommended, these expansions are what we recommended, and what we're recommending tonight. Next. And so you can see in yellow, uh, those are the expansion areas. Next, please. So verbally, what they are, are there are additional properties recommended on Allen Street, Katner, Elwood. Popper, Maple, New York Avenue, enough, quite a number of North Main Street. Um, Park Avenue. And then I've just highlighted this, uh, we also had one, uh, recommended on Broad Street. Um, which I believe at this point has been demolished. Okay, so, so that would no longer be recommended, but, uh, but we have recommended including. Uh, next slide. So this now just summarizes some of the adjustments that we're also making on this most up-to-date map, and as I mentioned. They reflect, uh, some, I would say some improvements based on having used this map now for a few years. And, and some errors, uh, that we noted in transferring data from the two thousand and twelve map to the two thousand and twenty minute. So, what we're showing right now is that the Hundred, Hundred and County Government Buildings, they have all been indicated. As seventy-five Main Street, very confusing on the map and confusing on the database that we have, so kind of just to. Um, make it a little bit easier and, and clearer, uh, we've now indicated the southern building as seventy-one A Main Street. County Administration has seventy-one B, Hall of Records seventy-one C, and Historic County Courthouse and Jail as seventy-five Main. Um, eighty-one Broad Street was, and this is, again, this was a data. Transfer issue that was, was marked as contributing, that it was, it should be significant, so that's now correctly marked on the map. A new buil- building was constructed at nineteen church, we've added this to the current map. Uh, thirty-nine Church Street had been marked as non-contributing, it was, it's actually contributing. One and three Dewey Street had been marked as encroaching, if they should be marked as non-contributing. That's been corrected, the building at twenty-nine to thirty-one Bloomfield. Which was shown on the map, it was no longer existing, so we've taken it off. Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's Hardee's, Hardee's Coffee Shop and Hut, it's there.
Um, not.
Yeah, there, there was a building there and then, um, it's not anymore.
You're talking, are you talking about the annexed building for Flemington first, that was demolished as part of the project? Thank you. So there's some buildings along there that are gone, that just. So maybe a GIS, um, data, so that's another thing I'll have to, we'll just re-infirm that.
Yeah, that is definitely an old building.
Okay, we'll, 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 okay. Um, and the demolition work associated with the Union Hotel is now shown. Oh wait, I'm sorry, I misread this, twenty-nine to thirty-one Bloomfield was.
Yeah, it says.
Sorry, sorry, I'm, you are correct, it was shown, um, this has been corrected, and there, it's, it's now, um. The footprint of it was incorrect on our map, so that's been corrected, and it's now shown as contributing. Thank you. The one that's, the one that's gone is twenty-one and twenty-five, those were demolished, as part of the hotel's object. Yeah, sorry about that, and, um, the rear wing of the hotel, the demolition of, of the rear of seventy-eight Main. And the demolition of eighty to eighty-two Main, now at some point, relatively soon, when the construction happens, we're gonna have to put all that back onto the map, but. That's where it currently is. Um, and thirty-nine Court Street was incorrectly shown within the di- district. That boundary is adjusted, though, so it's not that, was, was never a contributing structure, and it shouldn't have been shown in the district. So those are the corrections, um. So, next. So this is now the updated map with the correct, um, designations and the expansion. The one correction to this map, which I think will need to be made, is to take out, um, Broad Street. Um, one sixteen, one sixteen Broad, yeah, thanks, which you can, thanks Dennis, which you can see where that, the, uh, cursor is. So. Next slide.
Yes, yeah, so, so in summary, um, uh, just to recap, you know, we produced a memo in twenty nineteen, um. Uh, planning board adopted, uh, no boundary change in twenty twenty, the current map is incomplete, inconsistent. Missing historic property, so, um, on October second, uh, we sent you an, an email with, with five documents, um, to consider, so. One was a memo summarizing basically what, and John's just went through, one was the actual updated historic map. And one was a list of the thirty-six additions to the, to the, um, districts, uh, one was the presentation that we did. To be our council back in July, attempt for this, this presentation. And then the, the fifth document was, was document we, we had during our public outreach in twenty nineteen, which is a dispelling common myths, I attached it, and it's, um, got a lot of. Question and answers, I have a slide here, if you wanna go through it, of some of the things that people, um. Base concerns about with, with being in historic district, so, that's a very useful document for answering some of the questions people might have. Um, so then, then we, the next steps are obviously up to you, um, uh, whatever you have to do, but understanding you have to have a public hearing. I mentioned this before, and then, and, um, open a planning board, refer to Borough Council, and then, refer by the council. So I stand corrected on, on the process, because it's a bit, bit computer.
So let me, um, Dennis, can you stop sharing screen so I can, so we can see everybody? I may need you to reshare something in a second, but for the moment, uh, members of the board with questions, so the folks have questions. We start with the remote folks, Hannah Jim, Mike Dennis, Trent, no one getting those, those, those. Those knows, anybody here with questions?
Um, just to clarify, so the proposed expansion of the district, is this probably, would you see any further expansion after this? Or is this just to align with the new period of significance?
It's just to align with the, uh, corrected updated period of significance, I don't, I would not see any other expansion.
Was there any contraction?
Um, no, there wasn't, uh, well, what happened was there was, but most of that. Most of that happened previously, there had been in the old map, sort of randomly, um, designated structures. Kind of floating around outside, uh, the boundary of the district, um, which they did not make sense. They were not contiguous, and so there's, those, uh, were, were, they're not part of the district, so they're, they're. So I suppose you could consider that a contraction.
Yeah, I don't, don't see us expanding anytime, because here we, we set up here, that's now, so.
Right.
Any, any properties outside wouldn't, wouldn't qualify, so, I mean, we, we are supposed to do an update every, probably every ten years, so in ten years' time, we'll probably do. That probably just corrections will be next week.
So, um, when we were looking at this as part of the, uh, master plan, is there any validity to, you know, I see that you had. Some properties to make zones contiguous, um, almost like a patchwork, so you don't have a broken tooth scenario as you go down the street. But, um, if, if a property is, my words, not, not yours, encroaching or. Neighboring or adjacent to, um, it does affect the patchwork look. So if you have, it's like, for example, um, because it's not in the period of significance, you know, the World's Fairhouse. Uh, that could be torn down tomorrow, and I think it would be up in arms, and say, well, how could you let that happen? Well, because we don't deem it historic. So, because it's not in our period of significance, probably two years old, or three years old, so is there any validity to just? You know, I know we went through a lot to add very specific areas, but to just straighten the lines in the future. And if there's, if there's five houses that are all, seem to be, I mean, my neighbor's house, for example, diagonally across the street, I think was built the exact same year. My, but they're not in it, we are, so, and it's really, you know, I, I mean, I'm, I'm looking down Elwood specifically. Gentlemen, but, um, but it could, there are other areas that just say, like, geez, you know, we, we do get more teeth. On, from a historic preservation perspective, and, um, you know, and hindsight being twenty twenty, we missed the one on Broad Street. And it got torn down, had it, had we gone through in twenty eighteen and said, yes, that building would be standing today. So, and again, I know when Dennis, when we talked about this in our subcommittee, it was, listen, let's just get this map. You guys have worked so hard on the map, but it's almost like, yeah, well, maybe in ten years' time, but I think there could be an appetite. In the near future, to just sort of straighten up some lines, and my, my definition, um.
But is that like spot historical zoning to just put the World's Fairhouse in? I totally agree with Tom.
Yeah, yeah, well, the World's Fairhouse, there are no. So you look, they're both, they're.
The World's Fairhouse is, uh, fifty-eight, uh, without new. No, but it was, but it's the roundhouse, everybody knows it, it's a roundy, roundhouse.
So if you start saying, oh, that's a nice one.
I know, that was my question, is there any, I see other areas where we added, and it just became in the district. Non-contributing to the period of significance, couldn't that argument be stated for a lot of contiguous, um. You did.
Yeah. Well, you have to keep in mind, though, it's a land use order, it's not.
Well, so there's gonna be logic to it, that's why we trust, uh, John's, you've got the logic.
If I can say a couple things, first of all, so you can individually, uh, designate structures, uh, as significant. You can do that at the state national level, and you can do it locally, and they, they then would not be. Uh, they would be individually designated, if they're significant in some way, but they don't have to relate to the period of significance. Of the historic district, they are individually significant, so if there's a, there is a structure that was built in nineteen, you know, seventy. Or nineteen sixty, or whatever, that is individually significant for its architecture, because of an event that happened there, or somebody's significant lived there. You can individually designate it, and so for structures like perhaps the, the roundhouse, the World's Fairhouse. That might make sense, and the commission ought to consider it, in terms of the district. It, it's a bit, you know, there's a bit of art and science, and so what we were trying to do here was. Uh, a district is supposed to be, uh, contiguous, that there's, um, you know, that there aren't. One of the problems with the previous map was that there were buildings that were around, that were designated. Because they were kind of in, built before nineteen twenty-five, and, and somebody thought that they were significant in some way, so they were indicated on the map. But you couldn't consider it a district, because there was a bunch of stuff in between it, that was not contributing, so the idea of a district is that there's some. Continuity, and so here, you know, there were some outlined areas that had been designated before. And so, um, and there was enough continuity, we thought that you could. Even though there might be a couple of non-contributing structures, that you could kind of get a sense of it, now. Nothing is ever perfect, and you could kind of argue things one way or another, but this was our best shot, and, and so.
And that's how Dennis had, had presented it, the, with the amount of work that had gone in, but I do know that I think everybody on the subcommittee. Was starting to feel, um, remorse about not doing this earlier and losing the building, and.
Just to say one other thing about demolition, so at the local level, um, you, uh, the. The ordinance does not say that you cannot demolish structures in the historic district. Now, I mean, there there is, there's language about it, which I'm not remembering exactly right now. But, you know, and for instance, Union Hotel, that project is in the historic district. And. They were permitted. Not at the HPC level, but at the planning board and at the Borough Council.
By the area in need of redevelopment.
To permit demolition of even some relatively significant structures. So in certain, a certain circumstance, even though their controls are at the local level. I I want to be clear, like, it's not like this means you can't demolish.
Unfortunately, perhaps. I do, I do believe we have an ordinance that you can't pull a permit, you can't pull a demo permit on historic structures.
Without going to help these.
That is true.
Process.
We have.
Went to the garage, we demolished the last one. Sorry, the store was not contributing, but yeah.
Yeah, there's a process. There's a process, there's a step that makes a little. So. So if I can just close, because I I this is the exact conversation that we had, which you said that, well, we'll check off because we like it. I guess my my only ask for the HPC would be that I think this is great. I think it adds so much more well-rounded nature. Are there other properties that perhaps are not within our period of significance? That we would frown if it was torn down? And I think that there are a lot and then you say like, well, is there a way to govern that? And perhaps it's outside of the district, but it's somehow approaching or contributing versus waiting for ten years. And maybe it's a sidebar project, so I'd be HPC to just look at other.
Well, no, that's just good feedback, I guess, we didn't have the public outreach, you know, and we did, we did pick up all the ones before people served the map. But the other thing to reassure is that part of our CLG, when we become CLG, we start working with JPO and we're supposed to do. Do the the surveys a bit more regularly, I think, for them. So so there's a different format for them, so so we'll have a opportunity sooner than ten years.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, is that Ben Todd's point? Could we then instead of that for the next review that might want to happen, like, let's move along like this now. All this work, like I said, has been regret that this hasn't happened to do that. They've been waiting several years to get this through, let's get this through as it is now. And then there's open, there's chance for a review process to look at what's considered.
Yeah, I don't want to change anything on that.
Take down the roundhouse?
Yeah.
Is that lots? I think it's pretty sizable and it was pretty bad.
Yeah.
That there would be an outbreak. I mean, the worst, checking its variants, like historical and why it was built and how it was built.
So a property like that, I mean. You could individually designate it as like a local landmark at any time. You, I mean, you don't have to wait, I mean, there would be a process, but. It's not like you have to wait for ten years or or wait for this process to go through.
Yeah, and I think that's, I think that's the right way to go. Yeah, like, so let's get through this, but like, there are other problems. And then certainly they came through the researches we've done over the last several years or other things. Individually destined properties.
I would say the focus on this was really to try to. To. Make the the boundaries of the district to to try to make that all make more sense. So that really was the focus. It wasn't looking on. Properties outside of the district or or beyond the period of significance. But if there are one, I mean, I think those are great points and that the HPC can look at it.
And I'm I'm happy that I that we're finally getting this done. This is the thought, it bothered me in nineteen, so I'm glad that we're able to move forward. And I have literally one question about about. Well, I'll have Catherine.
Why why Catherine over?
Yeah, I was gonna say, here's my question about Catherine. So the Prospect Hill Cemetery was already listed previous map. And the proposed extension basically goes from, you know. Rings Caffener from Park to Park, yeah.
Put the slide back up, do you mind?
Yeah, well. Yeah, Dennis, or you can put the slide up that's got the update map. Yeah, that that.
Best one?
Yeah. So the the properties on Caffener between Park. And, you know, north of the middle school.
Yes, the forty-seven, forty-nine and fifty-one.
Yeah, yeah, those are small little houses that are certainly. You know, they're just there. And 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 the big yellow lot is this is the Jewish cemetery, which I. Full disclosure, I'm chair of the committee and that's why I know the property, but. That. What I'm, what I'm asking is I know it would be expanded to for continuity to make sure the Prospect Hill Cemetery went in. The Jewish Cemetery did not get created until whatever period of significance, it wasn't open until fifty-one. And St. Magdalen Cemetery was was also a later addition for Prospect Hill. But the. Any development along Caffener on the north side of Caffener, that those few properties that I can't quite see the color coatings that they're designated is. Incorrectly or non-contributing, I can't quite tell.
Well, there are, there are a number that are contributing, but then forty-seven, forty-nine and fifty-one are shown as not contributing.
Yeah, those three that are that are closest to the to the west there, yeah. But but I know the caretaker house in front of Prospect has been on the list for a while, but. That, there's no problem with 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 this this kind of jog here in the map, like, I just.
It's a bit of a stretch.
Yeah.
And it was really, there was, I guess there was concern about. The cemeteries kind of floating out there, so.
Why, why is that cemetery being destroyed?
I would have to go back and look at my.
I mean.
It's old, but.
It's it's old and it's got some interesting little mausoleums and graves, but. It also has a lot of the founders of Flumington buried there, Caffener, Emory, they're buried there, but. The Catholic Church has Walter Fran, who was, you know, arguably one of our strongest eight senators and acting governor. And the Jewish Cemetery is the founders of Flumington fur company and Johann Farms and my father. Why, why are people who established businesses and did things in the borough in the Catholic Cemetery and the Jewish Cemetery, why is that blessed store? Than Emory and Caffin, I'm just throwing it out there. You know.
You're asking a question I didn't want to ask.
Oh, yeah. Don't get it, I mean, I love, don't get me wrong, I mean, like. Wander around the Prospect Hill Cemetery, you used to have lunch there all the time, it's fabulous, beautiful cemetery, but it's.
The larger, the larger question I'm asking is if the if the modus, if if the MO to look at the Sanborns through twenty-one. And the aerial that we have for thirty-one to establish the bound edge of the period of significance of thirty-four, which I believe is absolutely appropriate. Boundary, I have no arguments with that. The inclusion of the cemeteries themselves is just, is just a question, either, in my mind, it's either all or none. Or 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 not, because they're not structures, right?
Right, it's history.
It's history, it's important. But they're also actively being used and so they're constantly being changed and utilized. Clearly, you know, they will be used for, you know, maybe for activity.
Those are. Good points.
It would build your argument to extend that yellow down. I just, like I said, I mean. You know, you've got the burn bombs who died in their eighties. Well, now it is, but not since orange.
So which cemetery is the beginning of this?
So seeing back to the, if if you can scroll up to the north, Dennis.
Yeah, that's the newest cemeteries.
Okay, so there's, you see there's a loop road. That's, that is St. Magdalen Cemetery over there.
That was more easily.
Well, it and then it it goes, there's, there's frontage at the back. So there's one entrance off West Road, at the bottom of the back of West Road, and there's another entrance off. Of 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 the other side, it it is a. Alright, so the story that I was told by the old player, I'm gonna go all the way in.
Okay.
Is that at some point. The one had been all controlled by Prospect Hill Cemetery, a piece was given to St. Magdalen's and a piece was given to the Jewish Center to to establish traditional cemeteries. I know that the the Jewish one was was established in fifty-one, fifty-two. I don't know the date on St. Magdalen's.
St. Magdalen's originally was here on Park Avenue.
Yeah.
At where the capitol areas, that was St. Magdalen's. And that was built, I think, in the mid-sixties and.
You remember, it was the same plans as the old entry system.
As the church was built?
Not the new St. Magdalen, the old St. Magdalen.
The old St. Magdalen forty-seven has its, and it was built as a Catholic church.
So it's gonna be the one on Park Avenue?
Yeah, yeah.
Was 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 the same plan as.
Okay, so where St. Magdalen's now is parish house was the home of Colonel Fran. That was the Fran mansion and all that property was his. So Arthur Fran, that was the family's home, they left it and donated it to the church when it died. And so they were buried in Prospect Hills, but not in the Catholic portion, they brought Walter. And Anne were born, were buried in the.
So Trent, Trent's got a hand up, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, let me, I just want to say, I I have to go.
Alright, thank you. Yeah, I I just, it's not a question of a proposal, it's just a matter of, what's, what's the rationale?
We, I mean, one of the, one of the issues, obviously, we did this back in twenty nineteen, there was a lot of discussion then about cemeteries, I remember that we did. Is, we didn't, we didn't, well, I'd like to, so we have to go remind ourselves on why we did what we did.
I will say, cemeteries are. You know, kind of a particular case. And if this was for the state and national register. These, the boundary might be somewhat different when you justify it to the state historic preservation office. At the local level, there it's. We want to make it as consistent as possible, but there's also feedback, local feedback. So at the time, as we put together, there was a lot of talk about, if it's from certain people, about certain historic cemeteries. That had been designated, had always been on the map, so to try to, you know. So that's how the discussion went. So I would say. Well, I could look at this again with with these questions in mind. And at the time we did this, that's that's how the discussion went. Nobody sort of brought up other cemeteries or. Or whether or not these ought to be included. I I think they're good points. I will maul it over.
Yeah, no, if you come back, okay, again, it's not a question of inclusion or non-inclusion, it's a question of what's the rationale for, look, we have, we have. Burial sites on on Benell Street, we have a, we have a, we have a church, we have the, we have. Presbyterian Church has 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 a graveyard behind it, the Baptist Church, Church Street has a cemetery attached.
For generally, there are, I want to look at it again, but in general, I mean. When it was established.
The cemeteries that that just referenced, are they on this now?
Yeah.
They're already designated. Like, so, I mean, I don't know.
So it's not to exclude other ones and if there were ones that have been missed that that are within the period of significance, so it's a period of, it's.
Well, so that's where I'm getting at, so if you want to include all the cemeteries, and I think Marsha's making a really good point about St. Magdalen Cemetery. The significance of that particular of of who's there.
When was it established?
It was certainly after, because I don't think it was established.
Yeah.
Probably, yeah.
Did the same approach for the roundhouse.
Yeah, then we need it to be individually.
So so but but that's, but the reason why, the reason why, again, this is why, this is what we started the purpose, was that the Jewish cemetery is now included. In there because you extend the district along Caffener to, because it now becomes a contiguous.
Yeah, and it's, and it's one piece of property.
And it's just a piece of property there and so.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So so I I it's it's just a question of. If you're gonna, if you're gonna expand, if you're gonna expand the district on Caffener, include that cemetery, which is out, which was absolutely established outside the period of significance.
Now, I fully understand what you're saying.
Should not also St. Magdalen be included? Or is it necessary to extend down Caffener Street at all and include any of those cemeteries? Then that, then it's more about what's the rationale?
Nineteen fifty.
So what, it's more the district itself, so so.
Does thinking like a cemetery that's currently being, I understand the historical, I mean, if it's currently still being used.
Yeah.
I understand it might have historic graves and.
Yep.
I've, I've started in some important people.
Yeah.
But does this, like, the historic affects the functional use of? I'm just making sure I don't want to.
Prospect Hill is active, it's been on the list for a long time, Prospect Hill is active. And it's been active. The Jewish cemetery is active, St. Magdalen's is active. I don't know, I don't know any place other than maybe that a small site of.
It's it's the same, it's like. There's a couple.
Yeah, that one's not active, but.
Isn't it a function, isn't it a function of the, it has properties on there, like there's buildings, isn't that why? It was considered significant or historic because of the buildings right here?
So so the reason why. The other cemetery was included was to make it contiguous. Not because it was in the period of significance, but to make it contiguous. And. So if there are other significant cemeteries. That are not within the district period of significance, they can be considered to be listed individually and that's fine. Now, but here, the question is, it is a bit of a stretch to do this leg to connect to. To the cemetery out there. But when we put this together, so this is a bit of the art part, right? At the time was considered important to and to keep that in the district. And it seemed possible, since there were some contributing structures on Caffener. That you could make the case that you could connect it with some non-contributing sites.
Right, and so so I understand that Caffener to Allen Street. Those are all, those are structures that are that are that are certainly on the east side of Allen Street or certainly, there's no argument on this. It's the, it's the. Yeah, they're contributing, you know, it makes, it makes sense, there's a logic to it, right? It's the, it's the three that we're adding to the west side of Allen, the addition of the Jewish cemetery. And I understand that the caretaker house on, that's that's in the frontage of Caffener, Prospect Hill Cemetery is. Is there, it's certainly a structure that's 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 listed, it's not a. I understand why that's, I understand why that that. I I I understand the logic, which is, and how you got there, it's just.
No, I think there are two options, you either to go with this or to to end. The district expansion at Allen Street. And remove the, you know, and then at some later date, you designate. One or two or three of those cemeteries that are not in the district. You individually designate them.
That that is a way to go, so I think that maybe if HPC, you said you wanted to look into something.
Yeah, I I thought we could say, wasn't the whole point maybe contiguous though?
That was the point.
Because contiguous is tidier, you know, so.
Again, I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't adopt the map as it is, I'm just trying to suss out the rationale.
If you, if all of this was originally owned by Prospect Hill, you could justify putting the Catholic Church. Right, the Catholic Church, right into this because it's all owned by them, it's all historical. Because it was all one old piece of property owned by the Prospect Hill.
That is true.
So we can look at that, yeah.
Yeah, so north of the orange bit, that's.
We can look at that.
We could do that.
So we've got to do a revised memo to pick up the Broad Street change, so maybe as part of that, we'll also.
I I think that would be the neatest way, neatest way to do it, because it was at the period, within the period of significance, it was still a single.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I have one, one more question along same lines. If a property in the future is designated locally as not part of the district, but significant in some other way.
Landmark wise?
Landmark wise. Can, do we need to change our ordinance to have that fold under the historic district ordinance? In other words, because we don't have an ordinance that covers a non-significant. Non-contiguous out of the district, we have a historic district ordinance.
I I would have to go back and look at the language, I would, I would assume, I would hope that there's language that. That you could have individually listed, individually designated structures. So that'll be another thing that we just, I just.
We did before, we did, we didn't have it physically dotted around.
Yeah.
You're right, so one of the future comes up beyond it, we can really include that.
So if if we, if we are looking at some, what some future project to individually designate particular properties. We should also at the time, obviously, if it needs to be ordinance changed to update that, we can deal with that. Alright, so process wise. We have a report, there's gonna be a couple revisions to the memo.
Do you want to see it again for a public hearing?
Well, I don't, I don't think necessarily need to have another presentation before the public hearing, I think we just need to have a public hearing. With the, with the memo getting to board, it's adequate time for us to be able to take a look at it, try to comfortable with it, yeah.
Don't we need to put the standard map inside of the historic preservation alone? I think that's part of the public hearing.
That's what we do for a master.
Yeah, so I I just, I just want to make sure we're clear, as we talk about a public hearing, it's a master plan, public hearing, specifically. It's a master plan, public hearing specific for this particular change.
So it's a master plan update amendment specifically for the historic preservation elements. Because we're including a new map and.
But I think to the extent, I don't know if there are changes that are desired for the period of significance, I know that was one. Yeah, if, if that's fine as is, then it really is just.
Okay, so then, so then the process for an amendment to the master, the master plan document has a very specific. Process and timeline, right?
Yeah, and it sounds like we're just basically taking this new map. And putting it into the old historic preservation element, it's an update.
It's, you'd say like that's what we're doing because the, because all of the other changes were already adopted. Okay, so what's, what's the usual timeline for, for, for a site element?
Ten day public notice, probably two hours of work, at least on my end. Um, because I'm just going to package it inside the element, so.
We, do we have to provide notice to, you know, Jason Dirk municipalities, Hunter County, all that other stuff?
Yeah, office of public advocacy of the state.
Make sure we do it exactly the same way. Right, okay, so it sounds like there's a little bit of work to do in HPC, but not terribly too much, right? We need notice to, to do that, um, hearing. I very much would like to move this forward before the end of the calendar year, I'd like to get this moving again, this stuff. So, um, this has been too long, so, um. Is there a possibility for us to, we have two meetings in December on the, on the calendar, right, is it possible then for us to do one of those?
I'm comfortable with it, but I think that my role in this is pretty small compared to.
Public hearing.
I mean, I'm really huge, I hate holiday time. Public hearings, because even though we're not trying to sneak anything through, it looks like we're trying to.
So we could push it into January, but the concern that I have is that what we're going to talk about in about ten minutes. About making sure we've got adequate space for what we've built up. In Jan- January.
But that might.
Right.
Yeah, but that might need a special meeting for them, you know? I don't know, I mean, that was what Susan was going to bring out.
Yeah.
I understand your thoughts, but I mean, is anything in this particularly contentious? The people involved in changing the, were, were, were noted, were, were spoken to in the previous, uh, intervention.
They sure were, other than the person who was sitting where I'm sitting.
I don't know, I'm just, I don't know.
Well, there's, there's additions now.
I was just thinking that it's not particularly contentious, right, you know, I, I understand where you're coming from, totally.
I just, I don't want it coming back to, then anybody up here was trying to. That's why, I mean, this is a protection thing.
It's all legitimate, it's all legitimate concern for us.
And if, if, you know, because this is going to fall, Jeff, on you, right? In, in a year, somebody's going to say, that chair did this, or they, and it's, could fall on me, saying, you know. You know what I mean? Which is, which is why we're not letting. The other man get here in December, it's not going to happen. So they, they got to come after the holidays.
Right, and when we had this discussion, what is one of the last time, we, we said specifically that we're not going to delay things, just. We had a discussion when I suggested we didn't have the public hearings in this pivot. And it was unequivocally, everybody on the planning board, so we should just go ahead, it's normal.
So I think that you, so we've got two meetings in December, we have December twelfth and December nineteenth. I agree that December nineteenth does not date to do this, that, that's, that's not a great. And honestly, the nineteenth we put on the calendar, mostly just in case we had to catch something before the, the, end of the calendar year. I don't put anything about that. It would be December twelfth, I don't know in a month if we, if, if, because you've got an HBC meeting tomorrow. HBC would, would need some time to.
What he's talking about that, I think that John will probably in a few days, it's probably too soon to look at tomorrow, but he, he could probably do a memo next week, that we, we could review administratively. So we'd probably get you something before Thanksgiving.
We do have a meeting on, in two weeks, we do have a meeting on the twenty eighth, and we could certainly announce. Make sure it's known that we're going to have this on twelve. It's not a required notice, but we would certainly start publicizing it, I think that, that could be.
Yeah, separate process, does this need to go before our council as well, or is this a full process?
Well, yeah, after it goes to us, it goes to council, because council got to adopt an amendment to the ordinance for the, for the map.
I'm not quite sure they go to January.
What's going to have to?
It's going to have to, so it's not like it's going to be put in the group before January first, it's not, you know what I mean, like.
Well, no, we, we have to.
You have to, you have to write to each property, you have to write to each property in town, and the, the ones that have been, there's, there's thirty six.
So Beth, is there, there's a notice requirement for the thirty six properties being added to the district, right? There's a notice requirement for thirty six properties being added to the district, right?
I believe so, but I think that might be part of the ordinance rather than the master plan. So the, the short answer is yes, but not specifically.
Not for us, but it would be with council, but have to notice them.
And in terms of efficiency, another way that we could handle this is. Uh, the council can introduce the ordinance, so the intro, the ordinance that formally expands the district. They introduce the ordinance, at the same time, they refer the ordinance to the planning board through your typical.
Which they would typically do anyway.
Right, and so at that meeting, the first thing the planning board would do presumably is adopt the master plan amendment. And then you would be able to find the ordinance to be consistent, offer any comments as you normally would, and then it goes back to. Council, so it's, it's one less meeting.
I hear you, but I think for this one, we don't want to cut a meeting out.
That's fine, I'm just giving.
I'd rather, I'd rather us, I'd rather us. We, we adopt the map as an amendment to our master plan document, but it's, it's council's obligation. To pick up the ordinance change, and they would do that, and then it would come back to us for consistency, and we would say, it's consistent because we just. But I, I, I would much rather have.
Wouldn't be officially adopted until council.
So there'd be, so maybe, there'd be a public hearing by us, there'd be a public hearing by council, I'd rather not.
That's fine, I just want.
Push that fast.
So you have, you have that, yeah, you have that.
All right.
I may need to have, um, somebody substitute in on December nineteenth.
Okay, I think, we may not have a meeting on that, we don't have to start the agenda, but let's, let's.
Can I ask the pub- public hearing then, what's the format, does, does that require HPC to sort, during presentations, support of that?
It'll be, it's required, but I feel like it's a good idea, you know, if they're going to ask me why. The buildings changed, and I'm just not the right person to, to answer that.
Would we almost have the HPC as a, um. A little bit like a professional witness, so that they could ask questions of the public.
Yeah, I, I would think it would be more of a joint presentation. Like technically, it's the planning board planner that's handling the master plan amendment, but really, we're partners in doing this.
Yeah, so I don't think it needs to be this entire presentation, I don't think it has to have this timeline, it doesn't. I mean, in brief, maybe some elements of what was here, but it doesn't have to be. I think that the board needed to give more details for sure.
And I think Beth leads it like she said, and then if there's questions or anything she can't. Address or things it's better to be addressed by you, I think.
Yeah. Okay. To have that, okay. Thank you.
Presentation not public here. With notice.
For December twelfth, so it's about time, we need ten days, that's why I figured we have time to. I know it's Thanksgiving in there. So it would need to go out like December first. Would be noticed, so a week after Thanksgiving, sometime to get out.
John, John's available, I know.
That's all right. Okay, thank you, thanks. Moving on to item ten.
Thank you.
Uh, item ten on the agenda is, uh. Completeness for, um, Chick-fil-A block forty four, lot seven, and, uh. I want to thank the applicant's counsel, who was in the waiting room, who's been watching us the last hour and a half. Overcoming to help us right now, uh. So, um, I'm threatened, Rosemary.
Uh, pretty close, yes, Mr. Chairman, attorney Rosemary Stone Doherty with the law firm of Javabound and Work Act here, but I don't. Here tonight on behalf of Chick-fil-A Inc.
You can do something with your microphone, it's horrible.
Yeah, we, I'm going to try. That there's a, there's a, um, remote next to the laptop.
Yeah.
Better now?
We're going to try to get the volume on louder, a little higher.
Sorry, I feel stupid, but I don't see it, oh, there it is, okay, all right.
Try again.
Is it better now?
Okay, so, um, this is, uh, completeness, um. Termination of movements for the application, uh, block forty four, lot seven, um. Uh, it's a preliminary final site plan of bearings relief is, um. We have the review letter from Van Cleef. Um, and so I just want to make sure that the applicant has had a chance to review. Um, both the letter from Van Cleef and from, uh, McDonnell, right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and in fact, uh, we did email over today, the title searches requested. Um, by, uh, Robert Clerico, I understand that Ian Hill is filling in for him tonight, I believe. Uh, Bob was down at the league of municipalities. Um, we did send over the title searches. Um, I had indicated on the checklist initially not applicable, since the site is already a hundred percent developed. Um, and we're talking about doing an extension of the second drive-through lane and adding canopies. But we did submit those, so those have been, uh, provided now in regards to. The completeness items three, twenty seven, twenty eight, and forty two. So that would leave the remaining item that we have not yet completed, uh, Mr. Chairman, as item fifty one. Which is the proof of the filing for the, uh, soil. Uh, we did, um, I did speak to our client's engineer. And he indicated he'll have that filed before the end of the week. And will then send those proofs over to the, uh. To the board, and at that point, my understanding, under the letter, that would be the final item needed to have a scheme to complete.
Uh, Mr. Hill, let me just check with you, um. Um, have you seen, uh, the, the, the items that were submitted for title search, and do you think that they satisfy three, twenty seven, twenty eight, forty seven?
Um, I have not had a chance to review the documentation, but, um. You know, as far as for the, for the purpose of completeness, they have submitted it, so. I mean, if we need anything more, we will request it from them. But I think it should be sufficient.
So, um, what we have done in the past. Uh, and, and I think it may be appropriate here, is we can grant a temporary. Uh, waiver for forty two, I'm sorry, for fifty one, which is proof of filing with. The Hunter County Soil Conservation District. Uh, and then once our, once that's done. And our, and, and, uh, Bankly has seen it and has certified that it is done. Then, and only then would we be able to schedule, uh, the public hearing, uh, for the application, so we could do that if the board is so inclined. Um, just, oh, the, the, does the, um, does the board, does the board have any questions for Mr. Hill about the review letter from, uh, Bob Clerico? There was one question about, for Jay, on, on, uh, traffic, uh, you're, you're, you're comfortable that there's not. Jay did, submitted a letter that said that for completeness, we don't need a traffic impact statement, and we can waive that. Correct. Okay, so seeing that there's no questions, um. All right, so then what I need is a motion to deem it complete. With waivers for, I'm going to read them all off, seven, forty four, forty nine, sixty, sixty one. Sixty seven. Marshall waiver for fifty three. Temporary waiver for fifty two, pending a review from the Department of Protection.
How many say fifty one and fifty two?
Fifty one and fifty two, right, well, fifty one is the right, fifty one and fifty two temporary waiver. Uh, waiver on sixty eight for the traffic statement, and deem it complete. And for all other checklist items. Because everything else has been submitted. Can I get a motion on that?
So move.
Second. Mayor Carroll. Mr. Campion.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Giffen.
Yeah.
Ms. Weitzman.
Yes.
Yes.
Just Mino. And Mr. Apple.
Yes.
All right, thank you, um, so once we have, once, uh, Clerico has the proof of submission to Sound Conservation, then we can. Uh, schedule, um, a hearing for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I do have one question, though, if we do get this turned in rather efficiently. And expeditiously, as our engineer indicates, uh, not to put, uh. Mr. Hill on the spot, but if he were able to, or Bob was able to review it. Prior to Thanksgiving or shortly thereafter, does the board, do you know, have any availability in their hearing schedules? If we were trying to look at that December nineteenth date that the board has before the end of the year?
I don't think, I think this is open. At this point.
Well, I mean, we're pending, you know, submissions of advice.
We've got, we've got, the, 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 I, I'm going to be very honest with you, there are three. Applications that are kind of in the wind at the moment, that are being continued forward, and. Any one of those could be burnt on those dates. Um, so it's possible, to be fair, but.
Our schedule generally does take people that are already in the process.
Right.
To be on the agenda, uh, in, before new business.
Right, so we would keep, we would continue hearings before we got to new items, so. It's possible for the nineteenth, but I, 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 you know, I understand the applicant wanting to. To move this as expeditionally as possible, um, I just can't guarantee that it'll get hurt before you're at.
No, understood, understood, I'm just trying to keep my client apprised of a possible timeline. Since most of our professionals travel from out of state, but I appreciate your candor, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and again, we do have a hybrid option, obviously, and so it's possible that we could, I mean, the meeting happens in the room, and if. Internet fails, that's, that's unfortunate, um, but it is a possibility for remote. Um, if you want to, you know, to take that as, as possible, you know, as possible, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so item. Um, item eleven on the agenda is the continuation of the public hearing for Wartsville Road Properties LLC. Application two thousand twenty two dash oh five, block forty five, lots eleven, twelve, fifteen. Continuing from October twenty fourth, at the applicant's request, we are going to continue this matter. To December twelfth, two thousand twenty three, seven P M, in this room, no further notice will be given.
With the hearing first or in the master plan for the HPC?
I don't know. Yeah, I mean, we've. Probably. And I'm going to be very honest, it sounds like they may not be there on the twelfth either, so I think that that's.
We'd be all, so we have a ten year requirement for a minute.
Right, so we haven't gotten.
Significant times, the four professionals have requested at least three weeks.
So we haven't seen anything yet on that. We are announcing it twelfth, whether there actually happens on the twelfth is, is an open question, if we're being honest.
And they have given us, it, an extension of time to the end of January of twenty twenty four.
So, that, that we do have that. But we'll see what happens.
Could that mean that Chick-fil-A could squeeze in on the clock?
It's possible, and if Chick-fil-A is ready to go, and.
We can notify them.
We can let them know, they have to obviously give their notice, but we, we, we'll see what we have, because there's also Central Station is out there.
We've got a couple question marks, I think the first thing that Chick-fil-A has to do is get that last completeness item. Once it's in and it's reviewed, and we see what's going on with Wartsville, with Central Station. We can certainly propose to them that, you know, if they want to notice for X date, they're doing it.
John is going to be here with the HPC.
Yeah.
And he's being paid by the taxpayers of, of Flumby Borough to sit here. And I would like to get them in now, so. Because that's our hearing versus Wartsville that's had ample opportunity. because that's our hearing versus Wartsville that's had ample opportunity and so if I can solve, if I can solve, and that's the feelings that I'm bringing up, just because they pay John Hatch.
I'm sure. I'm sure. Uh I also know that if we have people, members of the public who are here for uh the HPC thing, they we would want, we necessarily need to have them sit through the particular application.
But there is significant um um interest in the Wartsville as well.
There absolutely is.
There is, but I think the the hearing was last though.
But HPC, yeah, because that should be a much shorter hearing. If somebody's got, if some people have to sit for a hearing, I think they're better off sitting for the HPC hearing, it seems much shorter than what Wartsville.
No, I I would be inclined to put it first.
And we can always make a motion to amend the agenda. We see we've got fifty people here for HPC, then we wanna do that at first, personally opposite, so that's we have some life.
We have room, absolutely, okay. All right, so twelve is chair items, so um let's get to, let's get to the other things. So Liberty Village.
Okay, so we have this schedule. So as we started to talk about in the early part of the of the meeting, there's an effort to uh to try to finish up this process, quite frankly. So there's um ongoing negotiations for going redevelopment plan, which is principally what I wanna talk to planning board about and schedule since the board is uh certainly very involved in that. So I'm gonna lay out a schedule that had been discussed at the council and had been discussed uh with the developer. So uh the next step, uh first step is for me to to give this update, to give the planning board a heads up as to what's coming. The next step is um for the developer to uh to provide some additional information that can be considered during uh November twenty-seventh uh council executive session. The idea is to uh determine if this project is moving in the right direction from a design conceptual perspective. If the answer is yes, there will be a public input meeting, not a planning board meeting, but a public input meeting, the week of December fourth. And that will be an opportunity for the developer to uh review their proposal with the public and for the public to provide feedback, ask any questions that they may have. Um if that goes well, if if there are outstanding questions, it'll be an opportunity for further discussion, but if that goes well, that means that the Liberty Village redevelopment plan is on track for adoption in the early part of twenty twenty-four. If presumably if that goes very poorly or for other hiccups, the schedule is gonna be subject to change, but assuming it moves in in the direction towards adoption, the developer will submit any information I need. I will prepare the revised redevelopment plan, and prior to Christmas, December twenty-fifth, that information will be sent to the planning board uh so that it can be, so that folks have plenty of time to review it, given the holiday schedule. Um on January eighth, the plan amendments ordinance will be introduced by the council and simultaneously referred to the planning board for your master plan consistency review and commentary. We have, we are anticipating a January ninth planning board meeting. I believe that's your first meeting of the year.
That is our view.
I know there's an update.
I got it.
Um so just a day after planning board meeting to do that master plan consistency review and commentary. On January twenty-second, that's another uh regular council meeting, and that would be the time for the public hearing of the redevelopment plan. It would also include uh any other actions council need to take in order to uh implement this project uh essentially from a real perspective. Um so the critical dates for the planning board on our January eighth council introduction, January ninth planning board review, and then uh January twenty-second is public hearing at the council. Now, I know that this is a really tight schedule for the planning board, particularly with the back-to-back January eighth, January ninth meetings, and I don't, I don't wanna steal the chair of thunder, but I think there's been
Yeah, so I, so Susan gave me a call and gave to talk through this this proposed schedule. And one of the things that I think would be possible, because the only thing we've noticed in twenty twenty-four is the reorg meeting on the ninth. So it's absolutely possible for us to know exactly what Beth said and have that consistency at the reorg meeting. There's, there's no problems with that. The other options we could do, because we have noticed no meetings yet for twenty twenty-four, and we do those things at the reorg meeting itself. Um we typically meet on the second and fourth Tuesday. It's been that way for a while, but um so we would be meeting on the ninth and the twenty-third. It is possible on Tuesday the sixteenth to have a standalone planning board meeting. It's not a special meeting because something's been noticed yet. It's just a meeting. Um but it would be a single topic that we would just do the Liberty Village stuff, because my my concern about doing it at the reorg meeting is that the reorg meeting is a business that's gotta get done. Um and um we're gonna have a full house for the Liberty Village stuff, because we will. Um and so it may be worth considering, the board is so inclined, to think about a third meeting in January, because we haven't
I don't think it's an idea to to notice it, because we don't know what is going on. Because, I mean, you know, the council, when they see the whole thing, they may say, no, or the public may say, no.
Right.
Um, you know, there are, there are a lot of assumptions.
Yeah, I mean, you you so your assumption, though, Beth, um I can only imagine, because we haven't seen anything that can, you think you can get through a public input in one meeting for the Re Village? I think you have more like four. I honestly, I'm totally serious. I mean, we we couldn't get through it in
It's substantially
And that's why it will be a whole new crowd.
And and because it's substantially different, it's because of the stormwater rules that come in, it is substantially changed and substantially smaller than what was originally offered because of the water issues. So it is less, way less complicated, I think is the way I would term it, than it was.
And I, and the schedule that I just laid out is purposely optimistic. It assumes that the developers sent sent us all the information we need. It assumes that the council's comfortable with the project. It assumes that the public is comfortable with the project. It assumes that the planning board can take action between the eighth and the twenty-second. And so there are a number of points in the schedule where things may not go according to plan or decisions can't be made, and so the schedule is gonna have to
And the developer, in fairness, has been warned that this may take longer. I mean, none of us can control what happens out there, and, you know, he he thinks this is, I mean, I I can't predict it, but if it takes longer, it takes longer. But then it gets to the to the council for adoption, so February or March, that's what happens. I mean, it's the process.
Yeah, and that would would any discussion that happened on the eighth, so you're you're in in this hypothetical or not hypothetical, in this scenario, the packet that we would get before the holidays to review would be the same packet that would be reviewed at council on the eighth.
Yeah, it's because the holidays are uh because admittedly, I'm hoping not to work that much, and I think everybody's hoping not to be checking their emails during the holidays. And because this is so important, uh I wanna make sure that the planning board, as well as the council, has the new redevelopment plan well in advance, so that you have time to look at it, digest it, and if there are any, if there's any questions or anything that needs to be discussed in advance, we can do so before January.
And it's one of those places where I told redevelopment training for both sides of us, ours and theirs, and the developer, I was not going to shove a last-minute hearing.
Yeah.
You know, in front of the public in the holidays. I'm not doing it, but I did this stuff, had this stuff for thirty years, and I won't do it. It's too big, you know, so let it happen in January, and it takes multiple hearings. It takes multiple hearings.
Yeah, no, no, and I agree with that. So that's a smart way to do it, so so I
Yeah, so nothing, nothing will get introduced um by the council until after the first of the year, but we will have presumably, if the council likes this plan enough to move forward, there will be a public where where the redevelopment will be at a council meeting, where the public can hear him speak and him describe the project himself, and answer questions to the public before it gets here. And then, uh as Beth said, the the council will introduce in January the redevelopment amendment, redevelopment agreement ordinance, and then whenever, whenever the planning board's done, the then they'll adopt the two plus the resolution on pilot.
So Beth, let me just make sure that we're not talking about site plan yet. We're just talking about amendments to the redevelopment.
Yeah, site plan is not a part of the schedule.
So just making sure, so 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 let me, so then just for those who don't live and breathe
Excuse uh Jay and Ian.
Jay and go, yeah. Is that um
Hi, guys.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks.
Um is that we already adopted a redevelopment plan for Liberty Village. This is an amendment to that redevelopment plan. Then at some point in the future, assuming that the redevelopment plan is endorsed by council, being consistent with the master plan, adopted by council, all the other stuff that council has to do, and then at some point in the future, the developer will come with a site plan to the planning board for hearing, which that site plan will be adjudicated against this amended redevelopment plan.
Yeah.
So for those of you who are not here for for the hotel, and remember how many steps have to go, there will be mul-, this is mul-, this is multiples of of what's going on.
Yeah, so given that, I would, I would prefer to keep it on the ninth, because there is no need for a special meeting, not a special meeting. There was, I get it, but I mean, the ninth, if not, will be a tenth.
Well, we don't know what's getting carried forward.
Yeah, we don't know what.
Well, the reason why, only reason why I floated the sixteen, to be honest, is that we've got, we got, we got Wartsville, which we don't know what's going on. We've got Central Station, which we don't know what's going on. We just got Chick-fil-A. We don't know what's going on.
Unless we have um public hearing on the
Last twenty-eighth, but we're, we're still waiting on plans for that, but
And we can just check availability, notice for it, and cancel.
So I I, the only reason, the reason I was adding the suggestion of the third meeting was that because we've got three or four applicants that are still, you know, in November hanging out, I want, I don't want them to get you know, at all adversely impacted by the big thing that's coming down the road. That's why I was suggesting we
Do they think it's
That's why I was thinking the sixteenth, and if they're not ready, and the sixteen still preserves the calendar that Beth laid out for council to take action, it's it's meeting on the twenty-second. But if if folks are not available on the sixteenth, I understand. It's just, you know, it's a Tuesday night. It's the third Tu-, it's a, it's a third Tuesday. It's not a regular, it's not a regular meeting day.
It's a day after Martin.
It's day after the King holiday. Uh I don't know who, third Monday is usually somebody in the borough has a meeting.
Everybody's environmental.
So Environmental Commission would, they have thought that would have been their reorg night. I don't know, but it'd be wrapped it on the calendar first.
Yeah, we don't want it to Wednesday. Well, then she was in here. They'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Third Monday would be Martin Luther Tuesday.
Right, so it'd be the Tuesday, yeah. So that that's why I wanted to talk this through, and then maybe we just put it on the calendar as we're drafting for next year's calendar, which is also like a chair item. Um to put it on there, and if it doesn't happen, it's a count. We don't need it.
We don't need it.
I, yeah, I I could see that. I guess it should, there are so many unknowns, and to think of, you know, uh we've had some applicants that have kicked it the can down at the street for so long. I I honestly, I I really, I don't care because they bomb us every, every, every meeting. So I would just prefer to have efficient meetings and not attend any meeting, because no applicant is here. So however we can do it, that can be booted around, where you could say, hey, you know what? We got a slot. Hey, Chick-fil-A, we got a slot. Um so we don't end up in March still trying to put an awning on Chick-fil-A.
Well, that's the whole point, is I wanna get the net.
No, we don't usually feel the huge substantive on the reorg meeting, and that, that was what I mean, is we're putting something substantive on the nine, on the I I I I don't feel comfortable with that, I don't, you know.
Why?
Just because you have, you have, you have, there's some brand-new people, you have at least a shuffle or whatever's happening, and it's just people having a chance to kind of get into the spring of it, and then it's something that's make, this is obviously being raised as a big issue, the talent potentially gonna be. I don't know, I just, I I would prefer to have a short meeting on the nine, and be down and go off and do whatever you wanna do, to celebrate or congratulate or whatever you wanna do, and do substantive work on the sixteen. Is my thought, and I don't, I won't put it to others, but the votes, but else is that too.
I just, I don't know what he is enough.
I think it's a good idea to just notice it. Like, if we're gonna put out a calendar notice, put it on there. We don't have anything except for the environmental.
Well, they don't know yet, so.
Well, Dennis is gonna get that. I'm willing to use on that, so.
I just had a question. Um is there HPC review of the redevelopment plan or or not? No? Okay, thank you.
Only, the only part of that that is in this historic district is the Fran Soundery Office Building on Church. And uh in the original current plan that's there that is by the borough is to be demolished, and I will disclose that um he agreed to save it, and he's, it's gonna be refurbished and he's gonna keep it hopefully as a retail establishment.
And Dennis has an area need redevelopment, HPC rules don't apply, nor do our witnesses.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, and if we could do it so we we end up having efficient meetings, so that's, that's, it'll go very quick as we go through, and you know, I feel like I'm a little bit talking out of both sides of my mouth, because I am the one that's canceled Thanksgiving for a decade because of the burns that this, that we all had. Um so I understand the holiday season and the, and I do think that first meeting in January still feels like a holiday hangover, and people aren't looking for a substantive meeting, but I'm not sure that a week later, I mean, let's face it, whether it's the ninth or the sixteenth, it's the beginning of the year.
Beginning of everyone you just said, I'm not sure that that's true. The hotel project redevelopment agreement had it written in that in the plan, that historic preservation has no say. We did not write that in the other plan. So, right.
It just so happens that, it just happens to this particular site, doesn't have
Yeah.
Other than that, more particular.
The Cardinal Agway uh building has been in an executive session for HPC um to make sure it looks like Plumington, and um HPC also spoke with George about the Fran, Fran Fountain Building, because they, he does not have those exclusions in his redevelopment plan agreements from last year, so.
It was, it was, it was in the original plan that
Being in the plan itself.
The plan itself.
Again, it's different. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's why I just moved to thinking.
That's good.
Yeah.
All right, so that's, that's that. So let's, let's put the, let's put the sixteenth meeting on the calendar as a single, as a single topic, and if we don't need it, we don't need it. That's, we'll do it that way. Um coming up, um in a, a couple of the things I just wanna put on the the agenda, so um Wartsville's continued, so the next meeting on the twenty-eighth, um we have the public hearing for Blessed Wellness, which is a minor site plan. Um uh so hopefully that is, hopefully that moves forward without a problem. Um we are supposed to also be continuing Central Station, although we're still waiting on drawing, so I don't know if that's gonna happen or not. Um and um so those are the two things that are on the agenda for the twenty-eighth uh of substance, as well as the resolutions, things like that that are carrying forward. Um so we'll hopefully be able to solve a resolution for seventy church street um with, you know, next meeting. And then the one for strike, yeah, the fifty-three's may, no, not fifty-three, uh thirteen round. Um so that's for the twenty-eighth. Meeting on the twelfth, um we've carried Wartsville to the twelfth. We'll see if that happens on the twelfth. Um we might have Chick-fil-A, we might not have Chick-fil-A on the twelfth. We are planning on the twelfth to do
She was looking for the nineteenth, but maybe that's the twelfth.
Yeah, I don't think she realized what the twelfth was.
Yeah, and then we've got the hearing for the uh HPC map um for the historic preservation element uh date. Uh that's the twelfth. Right now, the nineteenth does not have anything that I know of, I mean, that's per se set for the nineteenth of December.
Right.
Um let's try to keep that open if we can. It's, I know you're not available. I know that it's the, it is, it would be preferred amongst well, many of us that if we didn't have to have that meeting, but if there's something that needs to happen, we may make it a quick meeting just to make sure that you can close out any time before your end, folks have anything that's open.
Especially since we're not that it asked.
Yeah.
Can they get in, and you get, gave the option for remote, which really makes it, it could be a fully remote meeting.
Yeah, so I I I, so the nineteenth is possible, and I think, you know, Chick-fil-A's a it's a relatively straightforward application, so. Certainly, I'd like, again, I'd like to close out as soon as we can, as quickly as possible. Um so we do have the ninth as the reorg meeting, has already been noticed. Um and then we're gonna put together a calendar for future meetings uh for for twenty twenty-four. Um so this year, we start working on that. Second and fourth Tuesday is our standing, although we're gonna have to look and see when there's council, buggs us, and holidays on Mondays, and other sorts of religious things and whatnot.
Too many.
Yeah, so hopefully we can have a draft, even, if we can have a draft either next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, just so folks have a, take, put another sense of eyes on it, just to make sure. Um I'd like for us to have on I'd like to do it on the twelfth, if at all possible, to do um an executive session for, to discuss professional um, an executive session for, to discuss professional contracts for next year. Usually do that at the first meeting in December as well. So we gotta, we gotta let it work. We didn't put out the RFP.
Okay, well, Bill here is not.
Also, can you send a note to Bill and ask him, is it too late to do that? Yeah, just copy, copy me on that, and just see, see what Bill thinks.
Beth, you wrote to him, and didn't you like to have somebody wrote to him?
I wrote to, I don't think I wrote to him, I wrote to Carl, I didn't get a response, but I'm, I'm actually, I heard that. So there's a, yeah, the RFP is open right now for a variety of positions related to the borough due December thirteenth.
So not the planning board?
Correct.
Okay.
It was.
Correct, yeah, there's no planning board, you know.
Okay, so I don't know what the minimum requirements are for those things.
I don't either.
That's why it's.
Professionals?
Yeah.
There's no requirements, professionals for attendees, I believe.
So.
The thirteenth is the deadline for the borough.
Okay. It could be, but we have a meeting on twelfth, so. So the other option would be, I don't want, I don't want to do it at the last meeting of the calendar year, I don't like pushing that to the end of the year if at all possible, just that conversation, I'd rather do it on the second class meeting. That's Bill, okay. And that's everything I have on chart items. Is there anything else?
I, I just wanna, um, comment on one thing. When I was reviewing the minutes from the October twenty fourth meeting, I noted, and I was just, um, skimming the minutes from the Central Station hearing, and I noted that Jay had commented that there were two parking places in front of the bridges. So I wrote to Jay and Beth and Kara to alert into the fact that several weeks ago, the council unanimously passed an ordinance eliminating all those parking spaces on, on Main Street. One, because there were complaints from neighbors on site distance, trying to get out of the driveways, but more importantly, that the chief of police looked at the site and noted that if you were coming out of Central Avenue, making a left turn, violated distinct distant turning radius set by the DOT or ASJO, I can't remember which. So, um, so they were, they're gone, and I believe Jay, you know, parking sign went up. Um, so I just wanted you to know that. I, I wrote to Jay, I said, I don't know if this is important to the testimony or not, but you should know, they're gone, they're saying that they've got. The minutes were absolutely correct, um, as they stand, but, um, this Jay didn't know, nobody knew. I mean, I mean, it was a public hearing ordinance. Um, the other thing that the authority body is interested in, you know, is that they also unanimously passed an ordinance saying allowing for pub-, for the, for resident permit parking only in a few spots along the justice complex, where the police and detectives have been parking during the day for four. Um, that will be allowable for residents with permits to park there um, Monday through, Monday through Friday, I'm sorry, they won't be allowed to park there Monday through Friday from eight AM to five PM. Unless it's a state holiday, they will be allowed to park there overnight, weekends, and holidays now, because it's such tight area. A lot of those little houses on Catner do not have driveways for parking lots. And, um, there's always a parking shortage, so now, they're gonna, they're gonna mark them out, and they're gonna sign them at the, at the.
Is that Catner between Main and Park or Park and?
Main and Park.
And, and then to the Park.
No, 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 it's just, it's just that, if you go down Catner and pass the post office, there's a little dip right next to the justice complex. That's the area. That right now is more ten-minute, no idling, you can't be here, and all the detectives and police park there. So now it's gonna, I think it's gonna hold, I don't know, maybe more by parking spaces maybe. And the public will be. Overnight, yeah.
Marsha, could I make a comment on the Mine Street? I remember hearing that we eliminated the parking up to Burkett, but I noticed last Saturday, there's two spaces in front of the building to the left, I don't know if that's the vaping or smoke one, where they're freshly painted spaces.
I don't think we're eliminated, that, it's, because that's, um, I don't think those were eliminated, that's Stangle Road, the turning radius is different there.
Okay. Got it. Got it, thanks.
Anna, you gotta put a hand up, I'm sorry.
No, no, this is, I have a kind of potentially random general question, that's also maybe naive. But where would I create a discussion about, uh, the Tuck American Playground? And potentially trying to fix it, because I was just there the other day, and there's some issues right now that are unsafe.
The liaisons from the council to the, to recreation issues.
Okay.
Which will be changed in January, presumably.
Okay. Okay, so, okay, I'll go then. Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, that was it, because I just, I was there the other day, and we liked a lot, but, uh, ooh.
Yeah, because unsafe conditions are broken, Hannah, just call the DPW and let them know.
Great.
Let that, and it needs to be WAC, or there's a broken playground, these are women, you don't even have to go to council, just call, Mike Kent.
Yeah, okay. Great, thank you, sorry.
Thanks, Anna. Um, any other chair items? All right, uh, bills were sent around, they get motion on to the bills, so move.
Second. Mayor Carol?
Yep.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Joshna?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Whitesman?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Aino?
Yes.
Mr. Epple?
Yes.
All right, uh, professional reports, any attorney reports?
So, little update on, um, Catalyst. I did confirm that their permit for the billboard is active as of October of this year. So, you know, I was shocked, but it is. Um, I tried again to reach out to, um, a gentleman that I was talking to, um, name right now, Jack Larkin, in addition to the CEO that Robin Lupita's directed me to um, sent a polite, but, um, urgent and a little sending email saying that we get to receive a response to anything that we put out there. Um, we hope we're not gonna go to World, please get back to us, yes, you probably need anyone, or anything so far. Um, I wanted to know, and, and I meant to email you this earlier, Riley, and I, I apologize, are they, do they own anything in escrow? I'd like to look at that.
Catalyst? No, they have a, they have a they have a balance.
Let's check that, and then I have a, a letter with regard to the conditions of the resolution and the abandonment issue of the, if you guys have for the board to take a look at.
What's it now, what's that way of now, well?
So I don't know if you were here, um, at the last meeting, but, um, they, the towns with Mount World had engaged them in connection with their redevelopment project, and they had to default them. Um, it's not what they were supposed to do, they had a sign that they were supposed to put up there as well. Um, and it kind of goes along with the unfortunate negatives things that we've been ignoring, how they have been proceeding. I have a letter, I have an idea, I'd like to put it together, I'd like to work and look at it, um, that may spark them a little bit. There are also, if we read the resolution of certain, read the language of the resolution, there was an escrow that, that was to be established by the borough engineer. I don't know if that was ever done, something I'd like to look at and do a little bit more, and incorporate that into the letter for them. Um, I think that's our only hope at the end of the day, that escrow was allowed to be utilized for any purpose. So we can go that route. The other thing I'd like to do is just.
There is. There is a, a current balance of twenty-one, two thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars in their escrow, the site plan escrow.
We, we can't make that determination, the way that I was thinking right now was to say, based upon the lack of communication, the lack of action, the last thing we heard from the CEO's communication was that it was, we didn't need the curb sign, it was going to be here in June, and it was gonna be done, nothing's happened. Um, we are going to assume that it has been abandoned unless we hear from you or someone appears before the board to be here otherwise, that's the mindset I'm thinking of right now. Because we have to do something.
I, I know that Chris Garcia, the municipal attorney, is also the municipal attorney of Middlesex Borough, and he went there to get them to do three signs, and they agreed to do one, and then they canceled the contract piece of Flemington. And they told them, you didn't finish Flemington, we don't want, we don't want.
Somerville wouldn't approve of. They went there, they got something in connection with their big project on the transition.
I do not see, um, I'm in the bonds and, um, some of the inspection escrows, I'll double check with Bill Hands, but I don't see, I see one for, um, the mere outdoor, for a landscape bond, uh, but nothing for.
A landscape bond, that would be noted since they're done, and they've completed. This was a pre-completion. And, and you can kind of read it that way, so that's, that's what I wanted to look at.
But that's, that's my last.
Thank you for staying on topic.
No, not beyond, uh, Madrid Village.
Okay, but obviously our engineers have left the building. Any need to go to executive session?
No.
And get a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thanks, everybody. And to you, everyone.